Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 16th, meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Just a little background, June 16th is a momentous day because it's the day of founding of IBM, Ford, and the Salvation Army, and it's Phil Mickelson's birthday. So that gives us -- and even more momentous, this is the day that in 2007 Rod Stewart, who is this pop singer, Rod Stewart, who is five feet one and 62 years old, married Penny Lancaster, who is six feet one inches tall and was at that time 36 years old. So that kind of optimism should inspire us this evening. We'll start the meeting, as usual, with a moment of silence. And a little bit out of order, let the record reflect that all commissioners are present, and the meeting is called to order. And if you would join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This is the time set aside for planning commissioner announcements. Are there any announcements from the commission? No. Richard, you're letting us down this week. Okay. So then, this is, we've come to the time for public comment. This is a period for members of the public to come forward and talk to us about any subjects that are not on the agenda this evening. So if there's anyone out there that would like to speak during this period of time, please come forward, give us your name, and we'd love to hear from you. No? Okay. Seeing none, we will move right on to our consent calendar, which consists of approval of the minutes from the planning commission meetings of April 7th and April 21st, and the current and advanced planning and processing list. Are there any corrections or comments on the minutes?
I did have just one question. Scott, the minutes are getting thinner and thinner with YouTube taking the, almost the entire content up. Is that something that we're comfortable with, that there's no basic synopsis there at all, except for somebody who has access to a computer to check the YouTube?
Well, the idea was code a following suit with what the city council was doing in doing action minutes. I know they were doing something similar. We could add more, a little bit more into it. I was kind of kicking it around, probably the last time I reviewed them before the last meeting, about adding a little more meat in there, just sort of to give a little bit of a flavor of what was going on. It's just, it's a time issue that we have, you know, from a staff standpoint, since we're sort of tight on that type of thing.
I just wonder if there'd been any comment from the public about it, because it seems like this set has almost nothing in terms of, except references to those. You can't tell the tenor of the discussion at all.
Yeah. We've not, I've not had anybody, you know, make any statements to us, you know, about it one way or the other. I'm sure as things move forward, you know, when we have more, you know, projects that have a little more meat to them and a little more interest from the public, that may change. And probably, you know, see, you know, how those types of situations play out and see if it's probably, if it's necessary to put more back in there. Yeah, so.
On that same vein, and since Michael brought it up, what about the long-term storage in 25 years from now when nobody remembers what YouTube was?
Well, I mean, you'll have the action minutes in there, we have the saved, I mean, we have in our internal files is the video files for these, we have all of them. They're on, right now, they're on disk. I'm sure at some point it'll probably be in a different storage format. But right now, we have them in disk, and you can come and get them from us and watch them on a DVD if you wish. We can burn those for you, so.
Yeah, I kind of noticed a lot of different governmental groups are going more to that format, for time reasons also, but, you know, also for, so that the minutes as written don't sort of shade things, you know, there's, people get the actual discussion.
Yeah. So. It's not, you're right, it's not uncommon. I mean, we're not breaking new ground here. We just saw what other people were doing and seeing how much time it takes them to prepare the minutes, because literally our administrative assistant, Gina, has to watch them while she's taking care of the front counter, doing other things. And so it's basically, she gets interrupted, you know, 100 times a day trying to do that, and it just takes forever to get them done. And so when they, that was one of the reasons why they went to that model, was because it just wasn't, wasn't real feasible to do it the way we were doing it.
I would imagine they're a lot more accurate, too. You're right, Chairman Teft, that you can change really the conversation on how you do the minutes.
Right. I was just wondering, maybe, would it be possible to have, to find out where there are, like the library, for where there are public computers available, and maybe just put that information at the beginning someplace for people that don't have access to a computer? That, it could be, I mean, it would be the same information every month, it wouldn't be something that would have to be changed. I mean, I know the library and Mills both have computer, computers available.
Yeah, I'll look into that. Yeah, that's a good idea.
So with that discussion, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So we will move on to public hearings. The public hearing, the public hearing item on our agenda this evening is number B1, which is case number UP-0-409, located at 2455 Greenwood. This is a conditional use permit, but I understand there's a recommendation for a continuance on this item. But, so, would you like to give us your staff report today, or?
I wasn't planning on giving a staff report. We did make an error in the notification labels that we sent out, the postcards.
Right.
And the postcards themselves referred to this project as an administrative approval, whereas clearly it's a public hearing. And so that's the reason for the continuance. We'll re-notice it for next week, our next meeting, I'm sorry, and take it in there then, so.
But this is, this is a public hearing item. It's scheduled as such, and so we would like to open it up to the public. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak to this matter this evening, we'd be happy to hear it, and we will remember it for next time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. And do we have a motion to continue this to July 7th?
I'll make a motion to continue this project to July, the next planning commission meeting, July 7th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
I'm going to abstain, because as I look in Google Earth, I am concerned I'm within the boundary of the project, so I'm going to abstain on the vote.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm.
Wise.
I may be on that, in that same boat.
And since you're not going to be here, I will verify whether you're in it before we come back. I have it on my, I have a note here, an action item to follow up on.
It's actually, like, three houses up and one street down.
Oh, you're close.
Right.
So I'll abstain.
So we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, can we call for a vote? Do you want a roll call on this, or would a voice vote be?
Voice vote's fine.
Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-0, with two abstentions. Okay, so we will move on then to unfinished business. The unfinished business before us is really a continuation of a discussion that we had last month regarding interpretation of the view corridor requirements of the waterfront master plan. We discussed that at some length previously, and hopefully we'll come to a resolution this evening. So I'm going to turn this over to Scott to discuss.
Thank you, Chair Teft, members of the commission. Yeah, as was stated, this issue arose at the May 19th planning commission meeting in reference to the Fowler project and the land side improvement specifically of the lease site. That proposed project included the demolition of the Morro Bay Landing Building and the Dockside 3, and then subsequent construction of a two-story commercial building. The issue at hand here was the determination of the required view corridor that were outlined in the waterfront master plan. Page 5.2 of the waterfront master plan requires view corridors on lots or lease sites that are greater than 50 feet and width of 30 percent, and specifically for buildings that are two stories, and it's pretty straightforward. The view corridor policies are supported by figures 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3 of the waterfront master plan. What you see is a portion of the figures, of those figures, and what you see on the left is, that's for this, that's for single-story, a single-story structure, commercial building on a 50-foot wide, minimum 50-foot wide lot, requires an eight-foot view corridor along the side. And then for a two-story building, requires a 30 percent view corridor of the lot release width. It's pretty straightforward. Looking at this, the figures continued, you see on top, you see the single-story structure on the left, it's got an eight-foot, I know it's difficult to see from where you're sitting, but it's got an eight-foot wide view corridor on the right-hand side of that single-story structure. You move over to the two-story structure, it has a note that says 30 percent of the lot or lease width. Again, running down the side, on the right-hand side, it's pretty straightforward, there's no ambiguity there. What has seemed to have happened is we've taken the figure below that, or at least someone in the past did, past staff, maybe the commission, I'm not sure, and you see you have the hatched area on the right-hand side, and then you have a little bit of that hatched area above the roof. This whole figure is meant to address how much of the roof is supposed to be flat versus angled. It has nothing to do with the view corridor, but yet this ended up being utilized to support, oh, we can put portions of that 30 percent view corridor above the roof. I'm not sure why we went down that road. This figure, again, is a little confusing, but if you read through all of the, you know, the, sort of the wording and language that's before it, it's fairly clear what it's for, and that it doesn't apply to the view corridor. I'm not sure what we got. Okay. So, again, like I had said, it appears to have been an interpretation that was, I think, Thank you. I think the intent of the waterfront master plan, the design guidelines, is pretty specific. It says, "View corridor shall be open linear space located between and adjacent to buildings." Again, it's supposed to look like that, the top figure there. You have the building, you have a 30 percent view corridor on the side of it. It's pretty straightforward. So we provided you a resolution that supports that, and so the recommendation is to adopt the task as a resolution for interpretation, and we'll put it in our interpretation booklet. If there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for staff?
Scott, I didn't see in reading whether parking was allowed in that view corridor?
There's nothing that's, well, I guess parking could be there, because there's parking spaces that are in front of some of those areas where view corridors would be. But you're not supposed to have any structure there, you're supposed to, anything above, you can't have anything that's above 30 inches above grade in that, in that area, otherwise it interrupts that view corridor, and then you're supposed to offset it by an equal amount once you get above 30 inches above grade. So the intent really is open view corridor out to the bay.
So parking spots could be located, like, off the, off a side street, or something in there, would that be allowed or not allowed?
Well, many of, you'll note, many of the parking spaces will, you know, run across the entire length of a lease site, so yes, you could have parking there, and we do have that in those areas. It's not really addressed, because those parking spaces are on city property oftentimes.
Yeah.
Sometimes they're on lease space, but a lot of time they're on city property, so.
Well, and the walkway would be in front of those closer to the buildings, too, so anyone who is walking will be able to take advantage of the view and not be encumbered by the parking.
There are, there are a few sites where parking is on-site.
There are some, yes.
Yeah.
The policy doesn't speak specifically.
It doesn't.
To parking. It speaks to structures and things that you might put there that would be associated with the building, and then says, keep them below 30 inches above grade, otherwise you need to offset more to account for that.
Yeah. We had a project where there was actually opposing, or mirror image development, and then there was parking underneath, and so we never had a clear indication whether the parking was allowed in that view corridor or not.
Yeah.
So, do you think that's something that needs to be addressed now, or is that such a minimal?
Well, I guess, the point would be, we have the, we have the pathways that we have out there, and those would remain open, as Commissioner Sorensen stated. And that pathway, at least down on the, on the north side of the Embarcadero, is on the, you know, is on the east side of the buildings. And so you would still have that for the public way there, that's supposed to be there for the, for the pathway, you'd have that, you would remain unobstructed for the most part. And we don't have a sidewalk or public access area that sits out beyond the parking as it stands today over there. At some point, there probably will be pathways that are out there, potentially across the street or something, but we don't have them now.
Scott, going, going to these pictures, this, this is a little bit reminiscent of that project on verges a little bit, how the interpretation of the view corridor, a little bit, for clarity. Thank you for that. However, during that meeting, I had a question about this. When it was verges, they had a shed there that was constructed, and I wanted to get a little more information, and one of your staff members helped me with that. Cindy, I appreciate that. And one of the things is, is that, how does a view, the shed got a waiver for a coastal development permit when it was under verges. Now, it's a fish processing business, so how does, how do we look at things that, like, when they're attached to a certain coastal development permit previously, and then they get split apart, does that, does that have to get revisited? What's the process or the procedure with that?
Well, the waiver, the waiver you received was from the Coastal Commission.
Right.
Yeah, they said we didn't have to get a coastal development permit for it, basically.
For the shed?
For the shed, yeah.
Right. Now, when it changes into a business, the building, that'll carry, that kind of carries over? It doesn't really matter?
It's a use change.
Use change.
It's a use change that's encouraged on the, on the Embarcadero, I mean, it's encouraged down there.
Okay.
So, I mean, so, I mean, we're putting in, you know, uses that are, that are related to the fishing industry, I mean, those are things that are encouraged by the waterfront master plan.
Yeah.
And by the city's general plan and LCP. So.
So.
We actually, we, I mean, you know, from a technical standpoint, we went in and evaluated the building on a, from a building and fire code standpoint, and as part of this project, that building has to be, as part of this project, not this project, part of the project that was going there, that building will be sprinkled.
Okay, okay, so you have, you have incorporated it into that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I just wanted a little bit more clarity on how the use changes, and then does that trigger a, you know, a view shed?
Yeah, the buildings are, the buildings are there, okay? So then we evaluate them, you know, from a, from a standpoint of use, can those, can a commercial use go in there? And for a while, I think we added occupancy as a U, and then we changed it to allow it to have a fish processing use in there.
Yeah, I just, one of the things I did notice is the address on the building is 1217, and it's 1215, I think, yeah, 1215 on the permit. I don't know if that.
It's the building that was referenced, everybody with the time when it was done, I'm not sure, maybe it had a different address on it, I don't know.
Okay, okay.
You know, it was all done in reference to the, you know, us putting the ice facility in there.
Right, right, which is right next door.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I just wanted to kind of get, connect the dots on, when we look at view sheds and how, you know.
And that shed was, was evaluated as part of the view shed, and the idea and the findings of the planning commission made in reference to that project was, okay, while it may not be consistent with what we believe is the view corridor requirement, this project was approved previously, and we're not reducing it beyond that, that allowed the project to move forward to the city council.
Okay.
Where it's been pulled now.
Right.
Probably not going to go back until August. So, anyway.
Thank you. It may also be, it may have also been relevant to the Coastal Commission that this was not a new building, this was replacing a previously existing shed, so they, if it had been a new structure, they very well might have required a CDP. This is not formally a public hearing, but if there's no objections, I would like to open it up to comments from the public. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on that, just, you know, we're certainly open to hearing comments, but I don't, I see the only member of the public here is shaking his head, so we'll close that and bring it back to the commission for any further discussion. So seeing none, do we have a motion to, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? So then, probably we should have a roll call on this one, don't you think, Scott?
Sure. Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sodowsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewin?
Aye.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Aye.
Chair Teft?
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Scott, just refresh my memory for a second. There was a second resolution that came, that is coming out of that meeting, right? Could you just refresh my memory on what that deals with?
You asked the question, and I was going to ask you about that, because Cindy and I went back and looked at our notes, and we, I usually take pretty straightforward notes about things, and I had an action item that talked about bringing back an interpretation resolution, and then apparently I either got engaged in the conversation with you or something, because I trailed off, and Cindy did the same thing. She had noted that we had to bring one back, and now I don't know exactly what it is, and we might have to go back and look at the video.
Yeah, I tried, actually, I tried to look at the video online this afternoon to answer that question, and it's not, it's not online yet, so.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah, she was, she had it, Gina had it up on her, on her desk, and she was working, she was working on it, so maybe.
I remember there were sort of two general topics on which there was confusion, or that weren't clear, that we sort of clarified, and, you know.
Yep.
Another resolution, okay. We'll get it, we'll get it.
Chairman, it might have been when we were talking about the pathways and how wide they have to be, and that we may have wanted additional pathways.
I think, I think you're right. I think it had to do with lateral access.
Lateral access.
I think it had to do with the lateral access provision, and the continuous lateral access and it being on the waterfront side of the development. I'm, you're absolutely, thank you so much.
That was, that was really good.
It's been driving, it's been driving me nuts.
Yeah, I was, I had a note in the top of here, when I, in Cindy, before she left today, she said, make sure you ask, ask the commission.
That's great. Okay, so moving on to item number D, which is old business, we will be once again, and hopefully finally, looking at the design guidelines for residential development, the interim design guidelines, and I think Scott's going to take care of this one, too.
Okay, so when last we met, that was the last planning commission meeting on June 2nd, where we discussed the design guidelines. Commission took a long look at them. We had the entirety of the design guidelines presented at that, at that meeting, and changes were made to sections A, B, G, H, I, J, K, and L. So we'll just go through each one of the sections that were amended. Okay, so this is the amendment to A, to policy A, this is the, the sort of preamble to figure one, which is something we changed from a 300-foot radius to, you know, talking about the neighborhood to a 500-foot, talking about what constitutes the, the project neighborhood. And then, I'm just going to read the whole section. It says, "Utilize figure one below when determining what constitutes the immediate neighborhood within a standard subdivision. For consideration of neighborhood compatibility, greater weight should be given to the character of existing development closer to a proposed project than to, than to more distant portions of the neighborhood." And then here's where we made the changes. In some situations, factors may be present which require a definition of immediate neighborhood that differs from that shown in the diagram. Examples include, but are not limited to, location, visibility of buildings, and then examples of terrain, lots of multiple frontages, small lot sizes, things like that. And then it's in reference, again, to that figure. Is there questions? Comments?
I just, I hate to say it, but I don't, I don't think you need the EG in the parentheses. In other words.
Okay.
Because you've already used the word examples, and EG means examples.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You could just make it, just get rid of the EG in the parentheses and make it the list of the four examples.
Okay. That's a good idea. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
I was waiting for a positive response. We sat there for a while doing that, that was good. Okay, so we're moving on to B, and I think I, I think I made a, I noted that we made a change to B1, but I don't think we did.
I don't, there's nothing highlighted.
Yeah, so.
B2 is where the change was.
Yeah, so B2 is where the changes are. So, change to B2 says, we're talking about scale and mass now, the perceived scale, mass, and design should be appropriate to the original home, and we're sort of lightening that item up, I believe.
Scott, on B1, there was a S, plural added.
Oh, it was an S. Okay, it was an S, all right.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Okay.
And it struck?
Oh, yeah, I see it, okay.
Okay.
It was at the top of the page, okay.
Yeah, it's hiding up there.
Yeah.
Any, any comments on B2, so we can move on?
Okay, the next, so we went through several sections and got all the way to G now for our next changes. We're looking at G2. Okay, so G2, G is dealing with architectural elements. We altered G2, and its architectural element should reflect the habitation and internal and external use of the structure.
Are you happy with that, Michael? Are you, does that statement sit well with you?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so, G3, moving on?
On G2, is the get changes from Teft going to stay in there?
I actually have removed it already. I didn't mean to leave it in there for the section that you got. That was, I was going to get them from you because that was one of the ones that you came up with, but then I just looked at the tape and.
You had them, yeah.
And got them, so it's not a big deal. I was, it was more notes to myself, I guess, when I was looking at, making the changes and accepting changes and that type of thing. Okay, so. Architectural elements continued, so we have a new three. This is for most traditional styles. Architectural elements should be balanced on the building elevations. One option to achieve balance is through vertical and horizontal alignment of the elements. Four, when the architectural style of a residence does not call for symmetry, creative asymmetric placement of architectural elements should be provide dramatic interest. Make a change to that.
I think it's, there's a may in there in our copy.
On four.
Architectural elements may provide dramatic interest.
Oh, may, okay, architectural elements.
We might want to place a four, F-O-R, may provide, four, dramatic interest.
I'm okay.
Four, okay. I don't have may on there, okay. Alright, so that's, whoops. That looks really washed out in that picture. Provided an example, Dr. Teft gave me a couple of pictures of some more modern architecture to give you examples of things that are more asymmetric looking. The picture that I have is actually really crisp and came out really well when I did it. I don't know why in the slide it's looking a little fuzzy. But it does actually show examples of, you know, windows and things like that that are offset and architectural elements that are offset, so I'm not sure. I think, I think it may just be the slide that I created for the PowerPoint. I'll have to go back and look at it, though.
Scott, are you thinking of adding that into like a figure 34 or something?
It was going to be figure 30B, and so that was a proposed change by Dr. Teft. And so it's something for you to talk about, I guess, is.
Yeah, I was just, I was just thinking that since we provided an illustration of the symmetric, we should, you know, give them an illustration of the asymmetric as well.
I like it.
Doesn't seem to be causing heartburn up here, Scott.
Okay. So, G, we have three and four, so that's going to take us to H. And we removed seamlessly from H2. Moving on to, I assume that's okay. It was a nod in their head last time we did it, so, okay. So this is I, so we have changes to the opening paragraph where we did some redactions. And then changes to I2, where we altered that sentence to state, window placement in the sidewall of a home should be offset to avoid looking directly into neighboring, into a neighboring room. And this is for privacy purposes, so it's options and examples of things that you could do to minimize privacy intrusions for neighboring development homes. I think we have changes to I2. We removed what was the original three and added a new three. Says decks and balconies should be designed and located with consideration given to the privacy of adjoining properties. We altered four. Other options for reducing privacy impacts between neighboring residences include application of appropriate landscaping, use of smaller windows, designing sill height above eye level or utilizing frosted or textured glass to reduce visual exposure. I think we have a five that we removed. So those are the changes to I.
Do you feel that we, going back to I1 and 2, basically they say the same thing to me. It's just one talks about side yard and one is a little more general. Do we, do you think we need two?
You mean incorporate them and make them one, talking about yard spaces and neighboring homes and then roll it into the specifics of window placements?
Well, they're both talking about windows. And one is a little more specific to side yards as opposed to just general. To me, I thought one pretty much said it.
Okay, so you have the one on the, so number two is referring to you have two houses side by side. You're lining up your windows. You can look into a room on the other side. Number one's talking about minimize where possible looking into yard spaces, so that's.
Well, it also says living spaces, which, I mean.
I could, I mean.
It doesn't matter.
We could combine them into one if you want. They are, I do agree that they're similar.
I see shrubs.
I kind of, I kind of like the way, when it's two of them, because it brings attention when you're looking at the side, when you're placing your window. So it flags it a little bit more for me.
There's a, or there's the middle ground, I mean, we could, no, I mean, because, no, it does both. I mean, but you could also combine them into one and leave both sentences. In other words, the first sentence could be number one and then number two could just simply say, in particular, window placements in this.
I don't disagree. I mean, that's what, when I read it, the whole thing, one time when Commissioner Swanson brought it up, that's what I was thinking, too, so.
Does that, does that work? Does that work? Okay.
Okay, let me make a note real quick here.
So that maintains the emphasis on the sidewall and it gets the logical combination into one point.
Okay. So that's I. We have changes to J, J4 looks like. So this relates to landscaping. Says siding of trees to avoid unnecessarily obstructing views from adjacent properties. In view sensitive areas, proposed trees should be chosen that do not exceed immature height that exceeds the maximum building height of the zone district. Proposed trees should also be continuously maintained at a height that does not exceed the maximum height of the zone district. So it's talking about height of trees in view sensitive areas.
So Scott, this is, this doesn't, this is not something that would ever, could be, ever be applied to existing vegetation, right? This is something that will be used in evaluating new proposals and new landscape plans and such a thing.
And that's what the design guidelines are for. I mean, they're for additions and new homes.
Right.
It says that in the beginning of it, so.
But it does state that it has to be continuously maintained as such.
Right, so that's exactly why I was asking. So what it means is if you come in with a plan and you've got a tree that would not exceed, say, 25 feet, if that's the maximum building height in the zone, and it mysteriously grows to be 35 feet, you've got to, you've got to take care of it. But if you're living someplace now that has a 35-foot tree, you would not be required to go in and top it.
Correct.
That's the way I read it.
And I think we, I think we excluded.
Existing mature trees.
Yeah.
Mature landscaping.
Yeah.
Should four then say just siding of new trees? Does that make sense?
Okay, so siding of new trees, we don't have, okay, so that's now getting into a little bit of an issue. So you have someone that doesn't have an application before us plants a new tree. You're saying our guidelines are going to regulate that? That's probably not enforceable. I would be concerned about that.
Still advisable?
It is, I agree with advisable. I just don't know that we could do much, I mean, it's not something that I'd be able to enforce. You know, what's going to have the force is we use these design guidelines in review of the project that either went before staff or the planning commission.
Right.
And so when it's approved consistent with that, then that lets the neighbors know that we're going to hold them to these things. And more specifically, this condition is probably, this guideline is probably going to be a condition we start putting in the project. Because it seems to be a real issue that we're having right now. And I get a lot of complaints about it. And you go out there and look at the trees and we don't have anything that regulates their height. But then I realize, you know, that house was built 10 years ago. And had we put that in place, then, then we wouldn't be having the issue that we had right now. And the neighbors would know about it, probably. And would be, hey, that project was approved, had that requirement with it. So it's probably something we're going to roll out as a condition.
Well, and again, we're just beginning the process of going, of updating the general plan, you know, and then all of the downhill plans that come from that. And so I suspect that this issue will be addressed a number of more times in the next couple of years as we go through that process in terms of, what about the guy who plants a tree that you don't need a permit for? You know, what about? Just, this is not the place for it.
Are we okay with landscaping?
I think we are.
Okay. Moving on then to hillside development. We struck the last sentence there, a portion of sentence, I guess. And then we moved into changes to K3 and 4. So we removed four.
On one and two, they're contradictory. Number one says step the building up or down the hill. And then number two states that you want to limit the amount of grading. So it's, it's, they're actually opposing forces there. The more you step it up and down the hill, the more grading you're going to have on a steep, steep site.
You would have more grading, but I mean, what we're really talking about here is limiting the amount of grading. I mean, I guess we can change the, change the statement. It would be beyond the building footprint. What you, because what we're talking about is erosion issues. And when you start grading beyond and grading a larger area than is necessary for the home, that's when you run into erosion issues. And so those are the types of things we're trying to pay attention to with this. And we can state that specifically if the commission desires, though. I could, you know, it could be changed to set the structure to the hillside to progress while also balancing or limiting the amount of grading beyond the footprint.
Okay, I'd be happier with that.
Is that okay? Okay. So we are.
See all nods?
That's good. Okay, we are two.
We got one structurally feasible.
What's that?
We got one structurally feasible.
Okay, so that, oh, and we had a change to hillside four. Minimize exposed foundations, underfloor areas, downhill cantilevers when structurally feasible. The structurally feasible portion was added at the last meeting. Questions, comments about that? No?
I think we're good.
Commissioner Lor came in and spoke with me today and pointed out a concern he had related to this slide. And it has those arrows on there. And he was concerned that that might suggest to someone that that's how we're going to be measuring height versus how we actually measure height from the average natural grade. This, if you recall, this slide was actually in reference to keeping things originally below the hillsides or hilltops, and we changed it not to do that. Instead, it was a good example of varying the height and size of the house. And so the idea would be, I would maybe change this and remove those arrows so that it doesn't look like that. And then the figure 38 would, the title would change to varying height of building elements. I think I forgot to change that on this slide. So get rid of the arrows, so you wouldn't see that anymore, and probably get rid of the ridge line because that's, makes it look like that's how you're measuring height. It actually looks like that's what you're doing. And so I think Commissioner Lor had a good point there. So if there's agreement there, then I would, again, remove the arrows in that, what was originally the ridge line.
That doesn't actually look like, it doesn't look like, it looks like, may not have actually been a ridge line, although it looks like it. But it looks, it looks like it's, it's, it looks like it's a constant height above either natural grade or finished grade because of the way it steps at the left-hand side.
Yeah, it was, the figure I took it from was supposed to be the ridge line. I think maybe, maybe they had used it for something else, I'm not sure. It was, it was referring to two or three different things, you know, where I grabbed it from. So it was, I think, probably a poor choice, given that those arrows are there.
Yeah, and that was my biggest concern with this whole, this whole section. Because when I first, on the last meeting, when I first saw that, that's essentially how you measure constant, constant grade, constant maximum height rather than average natural height. And that, that would, if, yeah. So if we get rid of that, it's not referenced elsewhere in the, in the section. It makes, makes me feel a little more comfortable with this. The other thing, Scott, is, did we do a, did anybody do a survey to see how many lots this is going to affect this section?
I did not, no.
Okay. You know, and do we have the responsibility of notifying those lots that it does affect? That, that there's a change of common?
It's a design guideline. I mean, we've been, this is probably the 10th meeting we've had on design guidelines.
Yeah, but this is specific to certain lots as opposed to generally over the community.
I think it applies to development equally as do the other policies. So I don't, I mean, you're, I don't think it's something that would be picked out. I think we're applying this design guidelines in general to the projects that come before us.
Yeah, but this section applies to certain lots with certain, under certain conditions. So I see it more as a specific, you know, specifically for a minority of lot owners or property owners. So it just, it concerns me that there, that there isn't a notification of that as opposed to, everything else is pretty much, you know, citywide and could be applied citywide. So is that?
I guess I don't share the concern, I'm sorry. I mean, I, they're guidelines. You know, we're trying to improve the things that we get in, but it's also, we're applying common sense to some of these things. I mean, we, we're, we've come up with some of these guidelines to address concerns and issues why I've seen with projects that have come into the front counter that we've seen. This just gives us things to point at and say, hey, please go look at this because it's a concern. And see if you can't do something a little better to address it than the, you know, 30-foot wall that you've put out there. You have a, you know, steep lot, that's a very large expression. Is there something you can do that you can vary the height of portions of the house to do that? We'd like you to do something along those lines if you could do, you know, that would be compliant. I mean, that's, those are the conversations that I have with people at the counter. You know, I don't say, hey, it's got to look just like this. You have to step it back into the hillside just like this. That's not the conversation that we have. And that's not how I've had, I've directed the planners to look at these types of things. I said, you know, they're, they're very much, it's individual to the lot and to the developments proposed. Most of the things that come in, that we see, that you see, are additions to single-family homes. So, you know, so they have, you know, so there's a little bit of a different way that you handle those things because they have to be respective of the existing structure that's there. So you can't always implement everything that's in here if it's an addition because it wouldn't work.
My, it's just in my conversation, I just want to be especially careful with this and overly protective of it because in my conversations with people, this is, this is what throws up the biggest red flags. And that's what, that's what I'm concerned about, that we don't, you know, put ourselves into a box.
If it creates problems, I mean, this is also a living document. I mean, it's not something that can't be changed. You know, if we start running into problems and we're getting a bunch of complaints about it, either that's going to come to you in the form of someone coming up here and speaking to you, or it's going to come through me. They're going to come complain to me and I'm going to say, we're having issues. And if we have a few of them, then I see the. And if we have a few of them, then I see the same issue coming back, you know, continuously. I'm going to say, we probably need to address the guideline. I mean, that's kind of my job. So, I mean, I'm going to be cognizant of those types of things and bring things, when I see issues coming up, I'm probably going to bring them back before the commission to have a conversation. So.
Yeah, it's just that, and not, don't mean belabor the point, it's just that as the city gets built out more and more, the problem lots are going to be the ones that are going to be built on. And so, because they're, they're the ones that are left. They're going to be the more expensive ones to build on, and, and that's the ones that we're going to see under this, this guideline. So, you know, having this reviewed in six months, you know, as a, as a follow-up, and then taking a good hard look at it in a year, I think is really, is really important.
Happy to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Other comments on this section? Section K. Solar access.
So solar access, one of the things I didn't mention about the solar access component from the beginning of the presentation was, the, the commission asked that I take a look at getting policy specific to solar water heating systems. I kind of went back to look and see maybe how necessary that was, given that I know I haven't seen any, and we haven't had any in the last 10 months. But what I did do is make a couple of tweaks to the language, that you could use the same policy that we have, in case there was maybe an issue with the design or something, which I don't really anticipate, actually. The other piece of that was, there was a request on the part of, of the commission for staff to look at solar-ready policy in here. When I started looking at that and what that would mean, and started looking around at what those look like, those are ordinances. And they tell you what you're supposed to have in the house, and that's an ordinance that would go along with our building code. And so I didn't include that in here, because this is not an ordinance, this is a guideline. But I would say this, and I had a conversation with Commissioner Luer earlier today about it. You know, we're going to be going through the adoption process for the building code coming up here pretty quick. And I know at one point, there were solar-ready policies that were going to be in there, or they were looking to put in there. So I'm not sure if they made it in or not. But if they didn't, then there's probably something that would be coming further down the road a little bit. But it's, it's a, it's a good time to take a look at those types of things when we do that. Not just solar-ready, but also graywater systems and that type of thing. And I, so I think maybe when, when we roll around to, roll around to that process, I think we might maybe pick it up and see what that looks like. And then maybe that's something I could bring back to the commission.
Are there any, are there any guidelines or requirements, Scott, coming down from the state with regard to either one of these things?
Yeah, that's what I said, they've been talking about it for a while, and I'm just not, I, I don't know if the, if the latest release of the building code is going to include it or not. It's been kicked around for a while, and it's, you know, it's had, there are discussions of both being in there or being as supplements to it. And I'm not sure where it stands today. I, I couldn't, I, I mean, I did a little research, tried a little bit right before I got here, but then got interrupted, and I didn't have a chance to look back at it. But it's something I'm going to follow up with and see where it's at, because I know that it's, it's been an ongoing conversation for a while, actually. And so I'm not sure if it's actually made it into the, into the text of the code this time or not specifically, or whether it's like an addendum type thing, supplement.
If, you know, the Cal Green, CALCs for Title 24 give a lot of weight, probably more than they really deserve to, to thermal hot water heating systems. So you can get a, a large credit for that, for your, for your Title 24 CALCs. So I'm expecting that we'll be seeing more of those in the future, as those, as those come in.
That's actually a very good point. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so that was the beginning of this. Those are a couple of things that, what am I, what am I telling you, things I didn't do? All right, so I told you, I kind of spent a little time and loosened up maybe a little of the language, and kind of, and put references to equipment, because that would be not just solar panels, but could be the other solar water heating facilities. Because some of these guidelines kind of work well with them, depending on how they're designed, there are different types. Certainly, we're not going to, you know, work on something that's an impediment. In fact, you know, right now, we're currently working on over-the-counter solar permitting process, where we have a checklist, and somebody could walk in, and as opposed to taking a couple of days to get them, you'd be able to get them the same day, at the counter. So we're, we're trying to facilitate this, not make it more difficult or harder, so. And then, so there was a change to 1, 2, and 4, it looks like. And then the commission requested an addition of 8 to minimize roof penetrations into the south and west-facing roofs. So I put that in there. Is there questions? Comments?
If I wanted to be proactive, rather than reactive with, with the first clause, it would be align the roof slopes to facilitate solar power, rather than, this, this looks like a renovation clause, rather than something that's encouraging people to design the whole house around this kind of thinking. You know, so it would be align underlying roof slope to facilitate solar equipment and panels where feasible.
I, I think we talked a little bit about, the last time, about, we needed to, this, this was all about making the solar fit with the house, but we needed some language in there to make the house fit with the potential for solar.
You did say something along those lines. So, so, okay.
Can we use the word?
Do we want to be, well, do we want to be, we can just be specific, and say, you know, four new homes, right? And let's just call one, just have one of the standards be four new homes, and that, and then have it, the design of, I mean...
For new construction.
There you go.
For new construction, yeah.
Because that would include additions?
Mm-hmm.
Or remodels?
If they do second story.
If they're doing second story, they're changing the roofline anyway. And that's what we see mostly.
Yeah, okay. But there, like you said, Scott, there are two conditions that we're trying to address. There's the, the design with the solar in mind, but there's also placing the solar on existing roofs. You know, we're trying to address that also.
Yeah, so I think we should be working on consideration for new construction, and utilize a similar language to what we have in one, I suppose. And what Commissioner Lucas referenced.
So I guess we want to say that new construction should either incorporate solar electric generation and solar water heating, or should be designed to facilitate its addition at a later time, something like that. I mean, there's two, because there's two possibilities. They could, they could come in with a design that has the solar panels built in, or they could come in with a design that says, we can't really put this, we don't want to really put the solar now, but we're going to, we're going to slope the roof so that it'll work five years from now, or whatever.
Well, the new Cal Green requires your location. Requires the location of future, future panels. And I'm pretty sure that that, that that's going to be approved in the next, the next round of codes.
Requires that the design allow for it?
Uh-huh. It's, it's part of AB 32, Reduction in Greenhouse Gas Requirements.
It probably reinforces our greenhouse gas policy that we have anyway. So they're sort of tied together.
It does reference encouragement of solar, just one of the policies that's in.
So are there any other, are there any other issues with regard to, from the commission with regard to these? Okay, so again, and am I interrupting, are you good?
I'm good, I was just making the, making the notes of what I want to put in there.
Again, guys, this is, this is old business, but we have, at every meeting, been opening this topic up for public comment. So I'd like, again, to, to give the opportunity, if anyone here would like to speak to the design guidelines, please come forward and let us hear from you. So seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. And I guess then what we need is a motion to adopt resolution number PC 2315, right?
Correct.
23-15.
So that would be moving it forward with a recommendation for approval of the council as, with the changes that were made this evening. That's what that does.
We'll all move to adopt resolution number PC 23-15.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. And is there any discussion on the motion?
The, it is 12-month period, and then reevaluate, right? That's what it says.
Well, that was the direction that was given to us, that was given to us by the council. That's their direction. I'm happy to bring it back in six months, talk to the planning commission about it, though. I mean, we can change that if you want. Do you want to make it six months? I don't mind.
Well, there, there's also a provision here that says it can be amended during the initial 12-month period as well. So it doesn't say it has to stay...
I put that in there on purpose, because there could be things we come up that we want to add, or that we want to delete or alter, change, what have you. So I didn't, I wanted everybody to understand that, again, living document, not something we've, you know, locked our feet in stone and can't do anything with, so.
I think if we just flag it as a, you know, staff update.
Okay.
You know, in six months, and if there's anything that, that, you know, gets, you know, raises the ire, that we can look at it again, you know, even earlier.
Yeah, just, so in six months, just kind of let us know how, how it's going, if there's any issues and...
Yeah, I'll put it in my, I'll put it in my calendar, you know, I mean, as a follow-up to this meeting, and that'll be something you'll see in six months.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. Let's, let's have a roll call then.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sodowsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Luer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Aye.
Chair Taft?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so...
Excellent, John.
We've come to the section for Planning Commissioner comments. Are there any comments or future agenda items to be raised?
I just wanted to say, I'll be missing the next meeting, and I'm still investigating whether I will telecommute via modern interwebs technology for the first one in August.
Okay. Very good. I mean, not very good that you're missing us, but hopefully you'll be able to be with us electronically. Any other, I did have one issue that I'd like to bring up and maybe get comments on, but I sent an email to Scott a couple of weeks ago. And one of the, when we looked at the, the project that was proposed for the Vergis site a few weeks ago, there was, there was one issue that it kind of raised that we didn't, that we didn't get into, because we didn't really need to specifically for that project. It wasn't really applicable. But it's, it's a general topic that applies not only in the Barcadero area, but in all of the planned development areas. And that is, the planned development areas allow for deviation from normal requirements, deviation from normal standards, in order to provide, quote, "greater-than-normal public benefit." And what has never been defined is what is greater-than-normal public benefit versus normal public benefit. In other words, obviously, if you've got a, you know, a rotten building that's falling down, and you replace it with a nice-looking, modern building, that is public benefit. But that's, to me, kind of like, that's normal public benefit. That's what happens when you build, when you, when you build a new building, regardless of whether it's in a PD overlay or not. So, you know, one of the, one of the topics that I wanted to propose for future discussion, and hopefully, you know, a resolution, and something that we can sort of talk about in general, without being under the gun, with having a particular project in front of us, is this question of what is, quote, "greater-than-normal public benefit" with regard to the PD overlays? And I'd just like to, to hear if other people think that's significant, or something that we should address.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good point. And I think that maybe we could even use the Coastal Act and integrate, you know, some of that, the spirit of that act, in what that, define that term. It's trying to get a operational definition, right?
Right. Yeah, and I didn't bring it up with the last project, because there were clearly a number of public benefits, including the parklet, the second-story deck, which are not required by code. So, I mean, it, it didn't seem to me that it was an issue, but it seems to me, but on some future projects, and also in projects that are not in the waterfront area, but are in PD zones, I think it might become an issue. And again, I think it's only fair to people who are thinking of developing in those areas to give them sort of, some sort of guidelines as to what the city thinks about that. Okay. So any comments from our staff?
I don't have anything right now. I thank you for completing the design guidelines. That was nice. You know, the, the next similar thing you're going to see that's going to be rolling around, probably in July, we're going to pick up the sign ordinance. And so there are some folks out there that have been doing some work on it, on their own, in the downtown, and, and they've had several meetings on it. And then we got it to a point, and it kind of fell off, I guess, right before I started working here. And a lot of effort went into it, and then it just kind of got set on the shelf, and we're going to take it off the shelf and see if we can't get across the end zone there, and maybe get that implemented. Our, our sign ordinance is old and outdated, and there's some good stuff in the new ordinance, and there's some additional things that need to be added in to make it consistent with state law. But all in all, I think we should be able to, you know, maybe get that taken care of within about six months, if all goes well. So, something on the horizon, I guess, is what that is.
Good plan. Good plan.
I have a question.
Sure.
Scott, can you give us an update on the parklet, and what's going on with that? I know that there was a survey that's out on the website.
There is a survey out on the website that we, that we had, you know, the, the positive feedback that we were getting was trending fairly well on it. We had, last time I talked to the city manager, was a couple of weeks ago about it, he's been on vacation. So I'm not sure where it stands now. We had about 500 to 1,000 respondents to it. He said, majority, over 50% of those were positive, or, and then I think the negative comments were in the, you know, 20% to 30% range of the respondents, so it was low. Obviously, we've had a lot of the information, and the, and the other survey information provided by, by Lena, provided at many of the council meetings, suggesting she had a petition also signed by somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,100 folks, or 1,200, I'm not sure where it's at now, that were against it. And then, including a survey that she picked up from the city of Los Angeles, I think, and had the business owners on Main Street, that block of Main Street, fill it out. And those are supposedly mostly negative against the parklets, I think mostly because of parking, because it removed two parking stalls. So, so that's kind of where it's at right now. We internally are getting ready to have a, a meeting, I think, maybe next week, myself, I, I should know, I set the meeting, with David, Dave Buckingham, and with Rob Leibic. We're going to sit down and discuss, one of the city's goals is looking at our parking sort of management plan. There's a lot of good things in it, and there's a lot of things that we can implement now. The plan was adopted back in 2007. But really, what we're looking at is additional parking options out there, and seeing what we can go get from vacant lots that we have in town, whether we could lease some of those up, or whether we could change some parking on some of the streets to have parallel... up, or whether we could change some parking on some of the streets to have parallel, or have angled parking and things like that. So we're going to start that conversation internally, coming up here pretty quick, and with any luck, maybe, you know, some of the solutions we come up with would resolve some of the concerns that some of the downtown folks have about that. Maybe it won't. But it certainly, that's where we're going with it. We want to, we want to, you know, take a look at some of that, so we can maybe provide some additional parking for the downtown folks, and maybe down closer to the Embarcadero as well. I mean, we do have the Triangle Lot that we're going to be looking at approving too, so that's coming up here in the not-too-distant future, so. There's a, there's a lot of things and a lot of inter moving parks out there that are going to do things with parking and to parking, and so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. You mentioned the Triangle Lot. From what I've, what I've heard is that the, the bo yard, the haul-out facility committee is proposing to use, is going to bring that forward to try to move that forward so we can get a boat haul-out facility here. Where, where's staff with that, or?
So the harbor advisory committee, Harbor Advisory Board, has a subcommittee that's been looking at that for a while. I met with them. They do have their eye on the Triangle Lot. I, I think it's safe to say that that portion of the lot, lot is going to be parking. Can it also be a boat haul-out facility? Potentially. I just don't think that decision's been made yet. And the reason I say that it's probably going to be parking is because we're going to, we have some plans right now and direction from council and funding to look at widening the west side of the Embarcadero to increase pedestrian access. Well, that's going to remove parking spaces, and the only way we're removing parking spaces down there, at least from the coastal commission side of things, is if we're putting it somewhere. And that's somewhere, the most, place that makes the most sense is probably the Triangle Lot. So that's where we're going to be putting some of that parking, I think. I mean, that's kind of the, you know, initial plan right now. We haven't started that planning process, although, you know, I'm getting cost estimates right now to do it. It's going to be a combined effort with the widening of the Embarcadero and the Centennial Stare. So other things that you'll be seeing workshops for and meetings on.
So have you located a, you know, an alternative site then for the haul-out facility?
No, no, I haven't. I know they've looked at other areas.
Yeah, because that, that is the most logical site for, for any haul-out facility.
And they, that's what they explained to me when I sat down and met with them, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the questions, you know, that, that is not going to be answered by this group, but needs to be answered by them, is, you know, if they're going to have a boat haul-out facility, I think it has to pay for itself. And from what I can tell, they haven't done the financial analysis on that to what that actually takes. So that's probably a piece that they, they need to kind of take a little bit longer look at. From what I had talked to them about, didn't seem like they had those numbers. Maybe they do, maybe they just didn't put those forward, put them on the table when I was there, when they were meeting with me. That could be a possibility.
So is parking, does parking pay for itself?
If we make it paid, it does. And that's on the table. I mean, those are things that we're looking at, that's part of the parking management plan. You can see where we would have maybe, I mean, this is a very fluid thing, but you put free parking in certain places, and you put paid parking in certain places. Paid parking in front of businesses moves people in and out, more people that can come to those businesses. You put the free parking over here, that's where all of the employees go and park. So there's things like that that you look at when you're doing, when you're doing parking management plans. I've talked to some of the business owners in the downtown, and they're not opposed to, you know, looking at things like that. So I would have served so other, other business owners wouldn't be as well, because it does create that turnover. That's the exact experience that I had when we implemented paid parking several years ago in Pismo Beach. Everybody was up in arms, no one's going to come down here, you're going to drive everybody away. They're like, this is the best thing that you've ever done for us. But you do have to work out where you, you know, have the paid lots, and you have some, you know, on-street parking, maybe that's more expensive, and then the lots are cheaper, or however you do that. It's, I mean, there's a little, there's a little bit of heart to it, for sure.
There was a parking study that was done a couple of years back, and, yeah, and if memory serves me right, that the, they found that the only real time that there was a parking problem was, you know, noon on the weekends between, between 11 and 3 o'clock on the weekends.
I have to, I have to interject, because I was on the commission when that came through, and there were some, there was some serious methodologic flaws in that parking study.
That it was paid for and was accepted and stuff, yeah.
But it was, I want to be a little careful about the way I say this, but in a sense, it was designed to determine that there was not a parking problem. It was, it was, the way it was set up, and I'd be happy to go into the specifics with you, but, but, but I wouldn't get, I wouldn't put all my eggs in that basket.
Yeah, it was just a study that we saw, and, and, but I think that, you know, yeah, I think there's still a great need for, for a boat haul-out facility here. And if this is going to be a viable, working harbor, I think there's, parking can be placed in a lot of different locations. A haul-out facility can only be placed, placed in a few locations where it's logical and, and feasible to run a, to run a 30-foot, 40-foot boat, you know, from the harbor to, to the work, the work area. So I think we have a lot more, we have a lot more flexibility with where we place parking, even, even, you know, placing it on the outskirts, you know, dumbbell consideration, and then dumbbell, you know, locations, and using the trolley back and forth to, to supply access. So I'd just hate to minimize, I'd hate to lose the opportunity for, for someplace that we could actually put a haul-out facility.
And I don't think that that was off the table. I mean, I expressed to them what I expressed to you, is that's what we're looking at to address one of the issues that we have. You know, if we're going to widen the Embarcadero, and I think it needs to be widened. I don't think a five-foot sidewalk down in one of the busiest visitor areas in town is sufficient, because people have to walk on the street. That's not okay. That's something we can solve and should solve. You know, and there's a piece of that that goes along with, and that's the parking that would be removed as a result of it. So we're going to have to do something with it. It just, that's one of the most likely places to put it. Now, it's not all the parking, it doesn't take up the whole lot. I mean, there's maybe 25, 30, 40 spaces down there, just depends on, you know, where you widen it, how far that, you know, that, that widening of that area goes, the sidewalk goes, it just depends. But it's something that's going to be evaluated, and you're going to get to see a lot of that, so.
Scott, at what point do we look for a North Embarcadero master plan? I mean, we'll have the new bridge open, we will have seen the end by the rock, have kind of a turnover, upgrades, all the, all the walkways from the rock back to the power plant are kind of in place now, you know. When, when do we start looking at these things? Because as soon as we start talking about it, we see there's this network of things. The parking interacts with the boat, the boat interacts with the Maritime Museum, Maritime Museum interacts with the parking, you know, there's so many issues that if these things get solved piecemeal, we may never really get the best solution to the whole north end up there.
It's a valid point, and it was something that was brought up a year or so ago, maybe a little bit longer than that. I know before Joe Woods had left, it was one of the things they were looking at. And then that kind of got put back, put aside for whatever reason. It was a conversation that I'd had with him about it. And so, I mean, to answer your question, I guess, is, that's what the general plan and LCP process is for. It's going to tell us all of the plans that we need to go update and what we need to go do with them. Some of them, we're probably going to update while we're doing it, because those are goals we have for the next 18 months, and some of those are mine. So, yeah, so you'll see something, you know, some, some of the things we'll be tackling ahead of time, and some of the things the general plan will pick up, and it'll say, go do updates and refreshes of these areas, maybe get rid of specific plans in these areas, I don't, I don't know. Beach Street specific plan comes to mind, I don't know that thing's really relevant anymore. Gone through it, and, you know, even when we've tried to implement things for it, people have, we had a backlash, and we don't want that, so, okay. So, you know, I mean, that may be things that, you know, some can go away, and then others, you know, we can point towards, you know, and, and refresh or update or redo, and...
Yeah, including in that, I hope, is the downtown.
That's in the current, that's in my current budget, and, and one of my goals, so. Will we be doing that? Yes.
Just to...
I'm going to change the subject a little bit, but, you know, we went through this process with this bike park, and everybody's like, all happy and yeah thing, and then, you know, and, you know, when you look at, when I talk to people, it's like, you know, people talk about government and all this, they can't get anything done. I mean, you know, we, we should be able to throw some dirt over there and get on with it, you know what I mean? And have it operational pretty quick. And I know there's always budget and concerns, but, you know, like, well, how much the dirt's going to cost? Like, one of the things I remember is when they were building the Quintana and Main project, they were hauling out dirt and taking it to the county golf course, you know, just truckloads of it. And now somebody was saying that the dirt's going to cost 50, 60,000. I mean, really, we, we should, like, if we let the public, give them the encouragement that we're doing something, and then do it, you know what I mean? I mean, really, you know, because that's one of the things that, you know, followed through, you know?
The delay is not the city. This is, the delay on this, on the bike park is nothing to do with us. It's on the bike park, folks.
Yeah, yeah, but still, it's like...
I mean, there's a number of reasons for it.
Yeah.
I'm not going to really get into right here, but there is, you know, I mean, but it's on them. I mean, they, if they want to bring it forward, they can. The person that was leading the charge has kind of been out, you know, for a while for various reasons. And so I think that might have had something to do with it.
Yeah, but you know, the people from the general populace, they don't know if it's city or not, they, they just don't see the project, you know what I mean? So it's like, you know, I don't know, just throwing it off.
I, I understand, it's just, it's not on the, it's not on our part. I mean, everybody internally even goes, hey, where is that? We were pushing, 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 and then nothing, and, and I think, again, part of it has to do with some of the folks that were involved with it. One of them, she's been out of work for a while, you know, for various reasons. And I think she's just now getting back, so I think that probably had something to do with the problem. She probably had to put it on the shelf for a little bit, because she was the one that was pushing that rock. And, and so now she has to get back behind it, I suppose.
Well, I just had a couple of closing comments. In terms of the haul-out, you know, just a personal opinion, I would, if, and I'm absolutely not knowledgeable in this area whatsoever, but I would just like to say if the fishing community feels that this is an important aspect of, of the maritime culture here, I'd sure like to, I'd sure like to see us try and keep that on the table. The plan I saw some time ago for the haul-out indicated that it really wouldn't take the whole Triangle Lot to, to, you know, to accommodate it. They actually had most of the lot as a boat, a boat storage facility rather than for the haul-out, so maybe, maybe parking and the haul-out can coexist.
The, the plan they showed me, they took Santa Barbara, the boat haul-out facility they have there, and storage, and they had that on Google Earth, and they overlaid it on top of the Triangle Lot, and it fit inside of there with a little bit of extra room that would, that would allow for parking. So, not super scientific, but, you know, gives you an idea about what the facility would look like and what it could do. And there was multiple tenants in the one in Santa Barbara, it was two or three, actually. So like you said, it was, there was a storage component to it, and then there was the boat haul-out, you know, repair facility that was in there, so. And it fit, I mean, literally, it just, you know, it's actually almost a triangular shape, I think, because I kind of plopped it down in there, and it kind of snugged up in the corner, and it fit okay, and would have allowed for, you know, some parking there, too. So, I mean, good point. The question, this is kind of reminding me, you know, that they were saying, we don't know what size, I mean, that was one of the conversation pieces that we had, is what size boat haul-out facility, and how large does it have to be for it to pay for itself, because it needs to pay for itself? And so that's one of the things they didn't really, they weren't really sure about, or one of the things they said they needed to get more information on, I think, is what it was.
I just hate to, I mean, I, I realize there's a process both ways, I just hate to see us do something that closes off that process. I agree with, with Jerry on that very, very much. And the second thing on the parklet, you know, just going back to that, that topic, I'm wondering, because this is a demonstration project, it's a temporary deal, but when, when we get around to finding locations for potentially permanent parklets, is that going to be a public process? Is that going to come through the planning commission and give people a chance to, you know, weigh in on it?
It's going to be a very public process, and it's going to absolutely come through the planning commission, because we have to come up with guidelines for the placement of those things, and we're probably going to have, you know, a two-pronged process, assuming we go down that road. It's going to look something like store owner approaches the city, wants a parklet in front of their, in front of their location. They do some outreach, talk to the neighbors, make sure they're okay with it. They come into the city, process permits consistent with our application package and our requirements that we have for it that have been developed at the planning commission level, and then we would be issuing coastal development permits for these things, probably. So there's going to be a permitting process, you know, you know, kind of a dual-pronged thing, one where they're fitting the bill to build the parklet in front of their place, a business, and then also when they're coming here to obtain their coastal development permit, or conditional use permit, or however we frame that, or their parklet permit, maybe. Maybe we don't need to do, because they're in the road, maybe they don't have to get a CDP. Yet to be determined. I haven't had a conversation with Coastal about it yet. But we're going to have, you know, a set of guidelines that they have to follow to do that, and, and there'll probably be a process that we use where the city might put one, put one or two in, and it'll say what that looks like, too. So you'd be looking at both.
Okay. I just, I think that's, I think it's, the more transparent we are, the better. You know, I think, part of, I think part of the reaction to the demonstration project was it caught some people by surprise, I think, you know? Okay, so if there's no other comments, we're not at all being influenced by the Warriors game, but we will, but we will adjourn until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be on July 7th at 6:00 PM here at the Veterans Building. Thank you.